We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. But first, I want to recognize that we have members of Boy Scout St. Rose Troop 49 in attendance tonight. And when we get to the pledge of allegiance, I'll ask you to start us off, okay? First, we'll have the invocation.
Oh, heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for all that's come together. Lord, we thank you for our young kids here tonight. Almighty God, I thank you for the blessing that you had on my father this weekend, Lord. He's sitting here looking at us right now. Almighty God, I thank you for our city council, our administration, Lord. Oh, Lord, have your way tomorrow, Lord. No matter what you are, Democrat, Republican, Lord, in your hands, Almighty God, you know who will win this election. Lord, there are so many people that fight for this right, for voting. And, Lord, I know you're looking down on us right now, Lord, but bless this meeting tonight. In Jesus Christ's name, we say amen.
Amen.
Will the members of Troop 49 lead us off with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon, Councilor Gordon.
Here.
Councilor McLean.
Here.
Councilor Lowe.
Here.
Councilor Crayer.
Here.
Councilor Adams.
Here.
Councilor Glenn.
Here.
Councilor Miles.
Here.
And Councilor Nixon.
Here. Do you have amendments to tonight's meeting, Mr. McLean?
Mr. President? We have a few. Add ordinance 23616, which is a CDW government, that's a scribbler's error. And we need to add also for privilege of the floor, Bob Horton, and number two is Vicky Sherrells, and add communication number seven to our agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding communication number seven, ordinance 23616, and the privilege of the floor for Bob Horton and Vicky Sherrells. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Privilege of the floor. Mr. Bob Horton.
My name's Bob Horton, 708 North Baxter Street, Lima. Appreciate the privilege of the floor tonight. Let me breathe. You know, as we look here downtown in the city of Lima, as we look and see the improvement that's been going on, we see where roads are getting ready to come down. It's going to benefit a lot of people all over Lima. And as we look north, we have improvement up there on that end. If we think about the wastewater treatment and the reservoirs, there has to be some vision, vision to get into this. There has to be a coordinator to hit this. And I guess you're looking at the strengths of where he's going with this. Without a coordinator, without a mayor, without his vision, without his people working for him, they, these things would not come to fruition, would not have come to fruition. We have here other things that's going on in this great city of ours. Infrastructure, you can notice it was bothering us, some of us, we were driving along the street and find all of these digging in the streets and replacement. All that just didn't happen. It came about because someone had a vision, a mayor, Mayor Berger. And to cut it off, breathe, and I'm going to leave you with this in conclusion, it tells in 1 Corinthians 9:9, it tell you that thou should not muzzle the ox, mouth of the oxen that traded out the corn. In other words, you're going to work your animal almost to death and then don't feed it. Then also it tells us in 1 Timothy, the fifth chapter, and the verses 18. Write it down, read it, check it out. It said, and we find out that a laborer is worthy of his reward, what he's labor for. So please, think on these things as we go forward, and not just turn it over to the hand, instead we're going to turn it over to the public, where the public can vote on it. Because they don't have the internal knowledge of what's going on within the city. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Vicky Sherrells?
Good evening, Mayor, President Nixon, Junior City Council, City Council members. My name is Moelle White, and I will be a candidate for Junior Mayor of Lima, Ohio Junior City Council. November 14th through 19th is National Poverty and Hunger Awareness Week. During this week, we will be setting up a new emergency food pantry on the south side of Lima, and we'll be collecting food for that project. It will be located at 1812 South Main Street and operated in the honor of Ms. Willie Mae Manley, who believes no family should be faced with hunger. We are currently planning our community Christmas party for children in need, which will be held Saturday, December 14th, in the basement of the Lima Public Library. This event is open to all public, so anyone can come, and it will take place on Saturday, December 10th. We're still recruiting members of our community, 14 through 24, to be involved with Ceasefire Lima and the Junior City Council. We will be experiencing our first training, our first leadership training, on November 18th in anticipation of the oath, taking the oath of office on Friday, January 20th, 2017. At our meeting Saturday, this past Saturday, we looked at statistics regarding youth incidents involving law enforcement interactions. During our next meeting, we will be focusing on our plan of actions to minimize these incidents and dramatically reduce the violence in our city. We are developing partnerships with Lima Police Department and Juvenile Court to help us develop these action plans. We appreciate any support we might receive from the city officials and residents, whether they be physically, financially, or in partnership. We have upcoming fundraisers scheduled, and we will be asking the public to be a part of our movement to peaceful solutions in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that item A be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I make a motion to receive, file, and approve communication number two.
Second.
Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation to renew an agreement with GE Intelligent Platforms.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number three be received and filed, and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three, and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with CDW Government.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From Major Baker regarding liquor permit report.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
At this time, I'll see Mr. Baker. I've got a couple of questions on the report that was given to us. On the very first, on the second page, we have requested in the past to provide us with the numbers and breakdowns of what each call stood for, and that has been done. But in the total amount of service calls, I'm going to start with Grandview, and maybe our chief that is here tonight can clarify this, not only for myself, but the other councils, anybody that's listening at all. Grandview Drive Thru received 18 calls of service. But when you go to the breakdown, there's only one item mentioned, and that is a 25, which is a robbery. Kessi's.
Mr. President.
Can I finish?
Go ahead, Ms. White.
Kessi's got 20 calls of service, and it breaks down to five, and then you've got three fights, and then it breaks down to a fight in progress, a fight in progress and a fight. I thought it was the same thing, I guess, I don't know. I'm asking for clarification on that. And it only has one hit for loud music. And this is less than 50 yards from me, and I know without a doubt that that number is probably wrong. Then we go to the firehouse, which has 22 calls for service, and then that got a total of 10. And drunk fights, it's just all over the place. I guess, bottom line, Lombardo's has 25, but when you break that down, they only have, they got one for intox, and one where they witnessed the person drunk. It might have been the same person, we don't know. But anyway, at the end of the day, their total is only four. So I guess, from a taxpayer point of view, let's go to Lombardo's. It looks like we went out 25 times, we paid officers to go out 25 times, but we only did four reports. Or are they equal?
Mr. President.
Let him explain this.
The calls for service is the total number of calls for service to that location, but then the breakdown that you've received with the individual numbers are those calls which council had agreed were the ones that they were most concerned about, and that they felt would constitute something that could allow for an objection to the permit. Now, as far as other things, such as the loud music, which you said you disagree with the number, we may have had allowed, other loud music calls to that area, but if we can't verify that they're coming from that bar, that does not count against that bar. That would be the ones that we have received calls on that were, in fact, verified as coming from that location. So again, this is in compliance with what City Council has asked for, and we have asked that council perhaps meet again, whether it be the Safety Service Committee or some other committee of the council's choosing, to discuss and update this list, but that has not, as of yet, been scheduled. So we're just going with what the past agreement has been.
Okay, and if we go with what the past agreement has been, again, I'm asking, what happened, say Kessi's? Okay? And I challenge anybody in the city of Lima on a Friday or Saturday to go down there, and the door is wide open, and we pass it, so I know they hear it. But I guess, they don't get a strike against that particular bar unless someone calls in and reports it?
That would be correct, yes.
So if you guys hear it, and you know it's blaring, it doesn't matter, you're going to drive right past it?
Well, in most cases, we are not allowed to just use ours judgment as the only call on that. Again, the idea of the noise ordinance is if it is disturbing the peace and good order of the neighborhood, and if the neighborhood's not telling us that, there's really not a lot that we can do about it. And so that's where we've asked for the community to assist us by giving us a call when that's a problem.
Okay, with that being understood, and they only got five hits, and I'm not picking on Kessi, because I kind of got discrepancies with the whole thing, but, so what happens on the other 15 calls? They come out, they check it out, say everything's okay, and they leave, no report?
It depends on what those other calls were, but, I mean, it could be, the other calls could be something, somebody had their purse stolen out of their car. That's not something that would normally be held against the bar, because someone else in the neighborhood broke into a car and stole the purse.
Okay, I remember when I first came on the council, that we asked, actually, I believe it was Mr. Magnus, that had stated that management of the bars were the individuals that were calling you, so they wouldn't get hits. And this, say, let's pick Lombardo's out of that 25, like, how many of those are management calls to stop anything before?
I can't stand here and tell you off the top of my head, but the ones that you have are the ones that were not in those categories.
These right here are no management calling whatsoever.
That would be correct, yes.
Okay, that helps. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Auditor regarding clarification of the mayor's salary.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials, Amy Odom, regarding the caper.
Mr. President, council persons, you've all received in your earlier packet copies of slides, as well as a copy of a brief executive summary of the first year or five-year plan's performance review. That program year is again from October 1, 2015, through September 30, 2016. This is all part of the federal funding process that we receive from HUD, where we have to basically tell them how we've performed on an annual basis. This report has to be filed by December 16th, and we are required to have a 15-day public hearing process. I'm here today to basically state that today, the public comment period, or the public hearing, is open and will be open until November 22nd. The full report is available. There will be a hard copy that will be placed at the library. There will be a copy available at DCD, and the full report will also be placed on the city's website, if people, persons are interested in reviewing it. The basic, you know, information, again, we tried to make it as simple as possible for easy review. If you remember, our five-year plan and the whole processes have become a bit different. They are now all online. Each year, the numbers have to add up at the end of the five-year plan as to what we've set for our goals and our performance achievement. In the first year, I think we did fairly well. Usually, the first year is a slightly slower year, and I think that in most areas, we were moving on track. Some of the things that I think could be called to your attention is in our housing, that there were new, no, new CODO programs. If you remember from our CDBG and Home discussions, there's money we have to set aside for New Lima. They did not have a project last year. However, we do have money being placed into the 53 Town Square project. We are able to report that we finished selection of our contractor and developer, and that the finalization of contracts will be occurring this year. Again, from the last report you received on the 53 Town Square or National Bank Building Project, they will be completing all their contracting by the end of the year. Paperwork, not only with us, but there are different funding sources, and construction is expected to start in June of 2017. Other types of projects, in the updated emergency repair, we had hoped to have 10 homes that received some sort of repair assistance. Six did apply and receive assistance. Under First Home Lima, which is the mortgage assistance, down payment assistance, we had hoped for 16, but only seven were attained. We're beginning to see a pattern in our housing programs, which I think have to do with the economy, also have to do with banking changes, where basically credit scores are very low, they can't get conventional mortgages, and so therefore, it's harder for us to do down payment assistance. So we will continue to work with our partners at LACCA and New Lima, as well as the Housing Consortium and banking institutions, to try to find more qualified persons. Similarly, with housing counseling, before you can get into the housing counseling program, you have to, one, be income-eligible, and also have credit that makes it possible for you to obtain a housing loan within a year. We continue to refer people who earn at that level to the Wealth Prep Program, which we do not fund, but the program that helps them repair their credit and make them eligible for housing assistance. That program is working very well, by the way. Wealth Prep, which is working on budgeting and improving credit scores, has moved, I believe, over 50% of their graduates back into the housing counseling program. As for the other things, housing services support, we constantly talk about this every year in CDBG, we are allowed to use CDBG funds to help fund some personnel to deliver these services. If these are services that must be provided, and we are using our CDBG and Home funds to provide that. Going on to the other programs that we provide, the property maintenance, rather, going through the slides themselves, Community Development Funds also provide assistance to the Police Support Services Program, where, again, they served over 5,000 people by trying to do safety presentations, 114 different presentations, as well as serving 525 households in nine churches in safety inspections. Demolition actually exceeded their goal this year. We had hoped that we would get nine, but by being able to leverage some funds, they were able to do 13, which I think is great. Again, we know that the funds, the over $4.2 million received by the County Land Bank, will greatly supplement demolition activity coming in the next year. Neighborhood services continue. Again, we had a goal of working with 10 associations, and last year, they were still working with actually 12, two of them out in the townships. Those volunteer hours are valuable, as they provide services the city could not afford to. And want to again thank those neighborhood groups for doing so. Parks improvements, again, their goal was to do a variety of projects, but what they were able to complete with their funds was to resurface the basketball cart at Lincoln Park and put in new storm drainage. Property maintenance continues to exceed their goals in terms of homes inspected. Nine thousand, over 9,000 inspections were provided to over 2,400 housing units, and we fielded over 900 complaints and junk autos. That program, again, continues to grow and will always be something that's, I think, central to the Community Development Services. Parks and Rec Program, if you remember, this year, this is reporting on last year's, there were 160 children served, with 103 coming from low-to-modern-income households. If you remember, the decision this year in CDBG funding was to move this program completely out of CDBG, put it back into general fund, so there'll be some adjustments to reporting that will need to be made next year. Again, moving forward from that, monies are spent on streets and street repair, basically streets, and also doing the corner sidewalks. Forty-three blocks of streets were paved, and over, I think it's interesting that we can estimate over 1,200 households benefit from that. In economic development, we really only have one project that we focused on, and that is, again, continuing to support the Career Pathways Program in advanced manufacturing. Their goal was to have 23 residents enrolled, five basic courses were offered, and 12 received certification, although 15 were the goals. As we go through the year, you have had Rhodes come and talk about the program, and I'm sure they would be willing to continue to do that. That level of achievement specifically for Lima residents mirrors the same level of achievement they're getting from county participants in this program. So I think it's a good investment, it guarantees seats, and it helps these people who are city residents move towards employment. Lastly, there's general administrative costs that were required to cover our Fair Housing Program. It was interesting this year that the number of complaints, people calling in Fair Housing calls dropped dramatically. In talking to LACCA and the Fair Housing staff, they're attributing much of that to basically doing a better job at educating people on what their alternatives are, moving them through, working with their landlords, working through code enforcement, and they're not getting as many repeat callers as they have in the past. This also, we will be working with LACCA to continue to promote this program further to make sure everyone benefits from Fair Housing assistance. And then the general administrative costs, which we, again, we go over every year, talking about how these funds are used to cover staff costs for the associate planner, the grant systems specialist, and the secretary, and also the PM portion of the housing counseling comes out of this, simply because it's the way the funding can be structured. All the funds that were not expended in that program year were accounted for and put into the last annual plan that we had completed at the end of the summer. Basically, anything that wasn't spent gets moved forward as those carryover funds. And so those funds have already been programmed within this current year. That's the quick overview, and I know that you may have specific questions about the programs. Again, this is just the first of the five years. This information will be posted on our website and available in public locations, and I'd be happy to field any questions that anyone may have.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just have one question on the First Home Lima, because we are setting goals, some of the neighborhoods are setting goals, because I want to cut down on rentals in the neighborhood. And so I wrote letters to five banks, got respond back to two, and they gave me some good ideas. What we can do to get the folks eligible to buy homes, because our homes are cheaper now, just like you could buy a Cadillac, compared to buy a home cheaper than a Cadillac. So you pay, you finance the five-year Cadillac for them, but you won't find the 20 years for the housing, and they can pay the housing. So me and him talked about that, and he wished to come together and work with us on this. I bring in a loan officer in, so we can be there to educate on site, so we can educate us on what we need to get done for a $15,000 house, for a $20,000 house, so it don't be so difficult to get in there, have a young lady working at Dana for four years and can't get a $20,000 house, but she can get a $40,000 Hyundai Supreme, you know? Or you can buy a $36,000 Jeep. But why you don't give her the house? Yes, we got long-term on that, and the value, get rid of the car faster than get rid of the car, I understand that. But that's something we looking at, trying to work with on that, changing that, because my goal is to take 3% down from 65% to 60% of rental. You know, we can't continue going down that road. I know the landlords get richer, and you still stay at that, living in his home, and you still have control of your home, you can't do nothing about it. And that's what we've been talking about, trying to educate folks on. But the banker said that if we get involved with him, we can work together, and so I've got two more bankers I'm going to see this week, and see, because we started working on that, because a lot of folks that was in First Home, I got turned down, you know? And I know some of the reasons they got turned down, and it's the right reason to get turned down. But we got to try to work with young folks right now, at the age 35, 40 years, it's one-win situation to buy a home. You know, don't wait till you get up in age, you want to buy a home, and take 30 years to pay. But he said that we could come with some plans to work with them. to pay, but he said that we could come with some plans to work with them. Now, I know you retiring, so I got to hold a lot back until we get a new director in there, so I can see here or she that we can work and put this together.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Yes, thank you.
Next, Mr. Warner Roach regarding leaf pickup.
Mr. President, members of council, I'm here to talk about leaf pickup. Happy times? The city's Public Works Department announces that this year's leaf pickup program will be scheduled to begin next Monday, November 14th. Starting on the 14th, the residents of the First, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth wards are asked to rake and pile their leaves to the curb lawn, not in the streets.
Where?
Not in the streets, on the curb lawn. Pickup in the Second, Third, and Seventh wards will begin as our crews progress. For efficiency and cost effectiveness, residents are requested to follow these helpful hints when raking their leaves. Number one, please bag any small accumulation of leaves and place them out with regular trash per our city contract. Leaf bags are offered to the City of Lima residents at no cost on our available 900 South College Street, or the Building and Collections Office located at 424 North Central Avenue. Two, rake all leaves to the curb lawn, not in the street. Our crews have the equipment to rake the leaves from the curb lawns, but when leaves are raked in the street, vehicles break them down, and it's really difficult to pick them up. Okay, it's really, really difficult to pick them up. This creates a safety hazard as children play in these streets, and they're not noticeable by drivers. We had an incident this weekend. We got called from LPB, where residents collected leaves and took up half the street, and the street was down to one lane, and that's real safety hazard, so we really, really got you to keep a home and help us with that. Three, make sure all piles of leaves are free of rocks, junk, grass clippings, limbs, and other debris in order to expedite leaf pickup and avoid injury to our crews or damage our equipment. If the rocks get into the leaf collectors, they come out like a bullet. So it's very important that we don't have any kind of debris with our leaves. And four, prior to the start of pickup, large amounts of tree or leaf debris can be taken to the Lima compost facility. That's located at 1227 East Hanthorn Road, and residents will need to bring their water bill with them to access that compost facility. Lastly, you're wondering when you're gonna, we're gonna get to you. Residents are requested to refrain from piling your leaves on a curb lawn, not the streets, other than the scheduled ward pickup. What we're gonna do is we're gonna have weekly progress updates. We're gonna provide that through the media so residents can anticipate the arrival of our city or crews. Questions you have?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Mr. Warner, I know you're new here, but when we have safe rest, and it starts snowing, and these are a lot of folks who don't know, we have makeup days. We always have makeup days in the city. I don't know, we gonna do it this time, too, if we have snow on our day sometime. Every time the sixth ward get ready to do it, no excuses, we always have something bad, some kind of bad weather come around, and most of my folks can't get out there and get it done, you know? Then I see these leaves blowing around during the snow time, but we will have a makeup day if we possibly have snow, any kind of bad weather.
That's correct, yes. Talked to the crews about it last week, and they did say, several times, we've had interruptions in leaf pickup because we got snow, so if that happens, yes, we will come back around. We're gonna get them till they're gone.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Next, the ordinances, ordinance 230-16.
This is a second reading authorizing a change to the rate of pay for the position of Mayor Pursuit, due Charter, Section 67.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 230-16 be passed on its second reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 230-16 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Ma, or Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Glenn, Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
No.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 230-16 will go on third reading, having failed to get the required two-thirds vote to pass on its second reading. Ordinance 231-16.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move the ordinance 213, I'm sorry, 231-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 231-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 231-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 232-16.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move that ordinance 232-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 232-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 232-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 233-16.
Amending the 2016 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 233-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 233-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 233-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 234-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of bulk fuel for 2017.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that we pass ordinance 234-16 on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 234-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 234-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 235-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Lima Allen County Convention and District Bureau using funds from the hotel motel tax.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that ordinance 235-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 235-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 235-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 236-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with CDW Government.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 236-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 236-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Ordinance 236-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. miscellaneous business, Mr. Glenn.
I got a couple things here, and definitely gonna be short tonight, because I know we got a lot of work to do tomorrow. I'm working on a housing grant, grant right now, on this company, and had some discussion with a company that we're gonna work on, helping folks with their roofing and the sign and windows, so I want to make sure it's right. So I'll give you more details on that once I get it all, approval on that. Tomorrow is voting day, everyone go out and vote. We will have folks there. If you have any problem, I will be one of them, making sure that you give me a call if you have any problems at the voting booth there, and I hope nothing don't happen, because, you know, everybody have the rights to vote, the way they want to vote, and it just, I'm just hoping, praying they get the right one, you know, and, well, God will deal with it, whoever be the one that win, and, this is all God kids, you know, we all human, so it can happen there. I appreciate the kids coming, tough Scott, I'm so excited when I see the kids coming, doing the pledge allegiance, you guys are fantastic, you know, I love see kids doing things. Our kids are runners, getting ready to run, the junior city council did a good job, great job, and she from Perry High School, and she now named Vicky Sherels. But these kids are really taking it up, want to make a difference in Lima, they're working very hard, getting it done, and I appreciate that. I will finish up my meeting, Counselor Glenn on the corner, I'll be on State Street, Frog Street, Baxter Street, and Wee Dot will be over there come Thursday. And another thing I want to say is that, everyone say a prayer for everyone, say a prayer for my dad, please, please, everyone, and you say a prayer, say one for him, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Westgate Neighborhood Association will be meeting Sunday, November 20th at 6:30 PM, Chamberlain Hercules Funeral Home on Cable Road. Our speaker will again be Tom Mazur, and this guy, I, he's a fantastic guy, he has so much information in his head here. If you don't know Tom, he's the director of the Allen County Regional Planning Board here, a fantastic speaker here, so if you've never heard Tom Mazur speak here, this is your opportunity to hear him speak here on Sunday, the 20th, at 6:30 PM. The Lackneff will hold their annual dinner on Wednesday of this week at 6:00 PM at the American Legion Post 96, which is on the corner of Metcalf and North Shore Drive, and this year, for the first time, there is a charge for the dinner, which is $15, so seating is limited, but still, if you can come out and support this neighborhood association annual event here, that will be greatly appreciated. Again, there's limited seating, and there's a charge of $15 for the dinner. And lastly, I'd like to say hello to a woman that I met on Saturday morning, her name is Barb Williams. I ran, she ran into me on Saturday morning, I ran into Walmart very quickly, I wanted to get in and out, I was on a mission, and I didn't even get a car, there was three things I was looking for, and she stopped me, and she said, "You're the woman on council," and I said, "Yes." You know, you never, when you hear that, you never know what the next words are gonna be, you know? And so I said, "Yes, I am." She said, "You're the one with the pretty nails." I'm saying like, "Okay," you know? And so she start talking to me, she kind of blocked my entry, so I really couldn't go anyplace here, and so she start talking about her area, she's in Mrs. Crayer's area, and she, she talked about the fact that her home was broken into, and they trashed her home. She evidently was sick or something, and she was away from her home for three weeks, and evidently someone in the neighborhood knew that they, knew her, that she wasn't there, there wasn't any activity there, so her home was, was trashed, and so she says she received quite a bit of help in trying to get her home restored here, but she said, she said, "Mrs. Miles, do you remember when you talked about blighted homes, and the fact that, you know, you've been living at your home for 40, 50 years, and people talk about, maybe you should move, and you said the only option is to sell your home or give it to Fisher?" She recited that to me, and I said, "Yes, I remember that." She said, "You were exactly right." She says, "Those are my options now." You know, she says, "I feel, since I've been violated, I really don't want to live in my home," but yet, she says, "I've been, I was raised in Lima, you know, my parents were, were raised in Lima, and she said, 'This is my home, and I really, really don't want to move,' you know, but she said, "I just feel like, since someone, you know, broke into my home, I just feel like I've been violated, and I don't want to go back." And she talked about, you know, moving to Bluff, and I'm moving to Crydersville, and so I said, and I listened to her, and I talked to her, you know, I said, "I really hate to see you leave," you know, and she says, "Yes, my house is paid for," she says, "I like my neighborhood," she said, "But there's something about, you know, once your home is broken into, you just don't feel safe there anymore." And so I talked to her and kind of reassured her that, you know, that there are services that maybe she can, the police support services, like, maybe they can come out and talk to you and kind of give you some hints about, you know, how to keep your home safe and those type of things here, but she was very, very warm, and I just told her, you know, we talked for like 15 minutes, and she said, you know, "I really appreciate you taking the time to, you know, to talk to me." She gave me a big hug, and then I gave her a big hug back, and then she gave me another hug back, you know, so I said, "Okay, I'll never get out of here." And so I just really want to tell her hello, you know, I told her, I said, "I will, I will say hello to you on, on council," and she said, "Well, I would really appreciate that." And, you know, and, you know, I really thought it was really good that I ran into her, you know, sometimes we can get so busy on life, you know, my goal was to get in there and get out, you know, never did I think that I would have the opportunity to kind of encourage this woman, you know, she's an older woman, you know, she's living by herself, you know, and she said that she has cared for a friend of hers for 23 years, and that friend just passed away, and she said, "Yeah, I feel like I don't have anything to do now anymore," you know, and so I just kind of encouraged her, I even told her that I would stop by and visit her, you know, and, so again, you know, I just appreciate the opportunity of running into someone like that, you know, taking the time to hear them and listen to them, and to know that people are concerned about their homes, you know, and that they do want to stay in their homes, you know, she's been there 40-some years, her home is paid for, she don't want to move, you know, and so I'm hoping that she will change her mind, that she will take advantage of some of the police support services that are there, they will come out maybe and look at her home, and see if there's ways that she can kind of make her home safer, you know, and to involve the neighbors, like, maybe if she's gone again, that maybe she can talk to her neighbors, so that they can be on the lookout for her, but a very, very pleasant woman, and I appreciate the opportunity of talking to Barb, so hello, Barb, stay encouraged. Lastly, I just want to say one more thing, too, our youth here that are here, I really appreciate what you guys are doing, you know, thank you for coming out, I know it takes, you know, courage to come out here and to speak here, but you guys are doing a good job, and for our club, our club officer, our boy scouts, you know, out there, thank you for coming out and seeing what council's all about here, it's part of, you know, preparing our youth for the future, and you guys are doing a great job, we appreciate you guys being here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to remind folks on council and in the public that there's a Public Works meeting for Monday, November 14th at 5:00 on Off Street Parking, but I'd also like to amend the title of the meeting and the subject to add the discussion on motorcycle clubs in residential areas. It's already in, it's already been referred to committee, and so I would like to add it to that night's subject.
Yeah, I'll just have to do a new notice on it, I'll do that.
Okay, all right, then, tomorrow's election's important, so it's always important that we go out and vote, and what's important about it is when the thing's over with, no matter who becomes the president for the next four years, the thing that we need to remember is that, that everybody has a different opinion on who you like and who you don't like, and that's why we have the process. One of my concerns is how upset folks might be if their candidate don't win or the other, because this has been quite a contentious election, not that most presidential elections aren't, but I just kind of want to remind people, kind of like what Mr. Glenn said,
you know, God has his hand in everything, and it's part of his plan, he already knows who's gonna win.
That's right.
So whether you like the person who wins or you don't, you know, you may not like either one of them, who knows? But, you know, just remember to be respectful of what our country stands for. We had people fight for, like Darius said, the right to vote, not that long ago, you know? And you have the right to your opinion. So, you know, I just kind of want to make mention of that, you know, whether I agree with you, I don't agree with you, just remember, we all have that right, and just be respectful of one another, and, you know, you know, if you have any questions, look up to the sky. I wanted to mention the scouts, too. I'm very proud of you guys, you're from St. Rose, and I'm glad you're here, I hope you come back and see us, or encourage the other troops to come and see us.
Right.
It is a great start to have you guys lead us in the pledge allegiance. And lastly, as always, I'd like to remind people to be good to each other, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I want to echo a few things about voting tomorrow. It's important that you're, you get out and do it. You can't complain about who's elected if you don't go vote.
That's right.
So if you go vote, then you can say a little bit if you want to, just be respectful of your other people, okay? Again, the junior council, I'm glad you're here, it's very nice to hear the upcoming things that you have going on. You know, if we could get more kids involved, our world would be completely different. I wouldn't worry so much about it. I worry about what our generations is coming up. You know, we, I look at these kids, and I don't really understand if they have the same respect that we had when I was little. And then I look at all these young men back here from the scouts, and I think, man, you know, these guys are doing the right thing. So it's very refreshing to see you guys here tonight. I hope you follow in some of our footsteps, maybe not mine, but maybe his, or President Nixon's, or, you know, the mayor, or wherever. You know, I heard her say that she was going to go try to be the junior mayor. It's an important position. It's important to understand that, that what you say and the things you do are reflective upon your attitude. And I'm sure that, from what I've seen so far of you, you've got a very good one, and I appreciate that. So be respectful of everyone, and I'm so glad you guys came. Get out and vote tomorrow, because your vote does count. If you don't vote, don't complain, don't say a word, because you don't have the right to.
That's right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you. Junior council, good job. I want to let you know my door is always open, you can come and see me, let me know where you're at, I'll come see you. Because that's one of the things that I spoke with a couple, like, I want to get to know who's up here. And I think you need, and you deserve to know what we're about. So each one of us kind of have different agendas, even though we're on the same team, I think that you really need to get with us individually, and talk with us and see our perspective on, on things, because his ward of town might feel one way, his ward of town might feel another way, and mine might feel totally different. Like, I really want you to know what you're getting into, okay? I think we owe you that, okay? To the scouts, your leader back there from the class of ninety-one, salute you, man, good job, I'm glad you're doing what you're doing. And I'm gonna pray for you, because I know you got a hard road, him being your father. Couple things. These last two weeks, I think the mention of Dave Berger has hit me at least twenty to thirty times a day. And I've been trying to get individuals to understand that this is not about the individual when it comes to the pay for this city. And a couple of them was blown away, because they heard a comment that we were taking this very personal. There's business to do. And the residents of Lima had put us in a position where we need to handle business. Kind of took offense to a statement that was made earlier, where people might not have the insight, the people of Lima are not incompetent, they know what's going on, they just can't figure why, figure out why we're allowing it to go on. So I think we need to choose some better words, and not put everybody in a collective group, because there's some smart individuals that know exactly what's going on, and it's our job as council to do the right thing, not only for our ward, but collectively as a city. Mr. Roach, Mr. Warren Roach, I am so happy that you're on the administrative team of the city. We've spent some time talking, good guy, I think I have a great sense of discernment, and I think we got the right individual for the job. And, and I'm gonna tell you, I want to thank you, your team, I can't, never remember this guy's name, but he's always out inspecting the streets. But the issue that we had, and I brought up about the streets on North Union Street, I personally watched him walk that entire block, and he showed the individuals from